We get started, welcome to the Planning Commission Thursday, January 9th. And Pledge of Allegiance. Jay, could I get you to do that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Newman.
Present.
Commissioner Keldorf.
Here.
And Commissioner Heschler.
I'm here.
And Sheriff Baldino and Commissioner Wingate are absent.
Okay, and any public communications? This would be the time related to the city business. Open public communications or closed public communications? Anything, if there is no consent calendar? We have nothing from that this evening, so how about written communications? Mr. McLean?
There is nothing today.
Say again?
Nothing.
Nothing, perfect. Then we're ready for new business. And will we be taking item one or item two?
First.
That's your call.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
I think we'll be okay to take the item, first item first.
Okay. All right, number H1, EA 1207. Project address is 224 Whiting Street and a request for a one-year extension tentative map, number 74692, involving the construction of three residential condominium units. Maria, staff report, please.
Good evening Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This item is a one-year extension of a map, number 74692, at 224 Whiting Street. The map was approved on December 14th, 2017. The subdivision map approval allowed three residential condominiums with semi-subterranean parking, six enclosed parking spaces, and one visitor parking space. The county is reviewing the map and it is not ready to record. The ESMC allows one-year extensions to tentative maps and requests must be submitted before the map expires. The applicant filed an extension request on October 10th, 2019, before the expiration of the map on December 14th, 2019. Staff recommends the approval of resolution number 2879. The project is categorically exempt as a Class III new construction and a Class 32 infill development. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
The applicant is here.
Okay, any questions first of all for staff?
I'm assuming that December date is not a problem considering it's January 9th now.
That's correct. They are required to only submit before the map expires, and that stops the clock.
And one more question, Maria, it's just typical for a delay for the county, recordation of the, it's typical delay?
Yes, it could take sometimes six months or more.
Okay, okay.
That was my question as well.
All right. Thank you very much. We will actually open it up to the applicant if they're here and would like to address the commission.
Good evening, I'm Brandon Strauss for the applicant. I don't really have much to do other than to assure you that the developer is moving forward apace and has every intention of finishing the project, so, and I can answer any questions you have.
What state is the project in right now?
It's actually not demolished yet. The developer has been working on the engineering of the shoring, and it's been a little bit tricky and he's trying to get it right and make sure it's still affordable for the project. So I think that's under control and now he's moving forward.
Gotcha. And with this new extension, when do you think the place will be complete?
You know, generally, just my experience is that there's about 12 to 14-month time span between demolition and completion. So, you know, assuming we can do demolition in the next couple of months, 16 months?
Gotcha, okay. So since there's no demolition, it hasn't been a nuisance to the neighbors or anything?
No, no, no.
Very good. Any further questions?
Not for me.
All right. Very good. We'll close that, those communications, and then the rest of the information or questions among us will come through the dais. I have no issues with the extension.
No, let's do it.
Yeah, all right. May I take a motion, please?
I will move to pass the tentative map extension for EA 1207.
And a second?
I'll second it.
There you go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, very good. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to H2. Item EA 1154, amendment to the specific plan, conditions of approval and development agreement at the 540 East Imperial Highway. The applicant is Dr. Horton. And we will get a staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, Planning Commissioners. This is an item that requests that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the council approve an ordinance amending the affordable housing requirements at the Dr. Horton project. The ordinance would be amending the development agreement to allow a $5.3 million payment in lieu of providing six affordable housing units. The money would be set aside to bring on a nonprofit organization to obtain and manage affordable rental housing units that will help refill more families. With that, staff and the Mr. Scott Mitnick from the City Manager's Office is here to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mitnick is with us? Very good. May we get a report from you?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm available for questions. That's my report.
All right, okay.
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to just add to Director Lee's comments very briefly. A couple of things is, just for the record, Dr. Horton did submit the application presenting two options, two options to the city, to the Planning Commission, ultimately the City Council. Option number one is the eight moderate units, which was presented before, to the Planning Commission and to the City Council. And then the new option, which wasn't before the Planning Commission the last time, was the in-lu fee, $5.3 million, to be used for affordable housing purposes. As the Planning Commission is probably well aware, this item did go to the Planning Commission last January and February. And if memory serves me right, you did make a recommendation for the City Council to proceed with the eight moderate unit option. That item was presented to the council at a few meetings, last spring and summer. Ultimately, the council decided not to adopt the ordinance and move forward with that proposal. So the city manager, our office has been working with Dr. Horton to explore other options. Previously, Dr. Horton had offered $3.3 million in lue fee. So the $5.3 million is considerably higher than what was offered last time. And now with the new direction, new leadership, the new city manager, the staff's recommendation has changed from the last time this was before you. So we are looking for your recommendation tonight so that we can take you to the City Council. Dr. Horton's in the audience if you have questions for them. I would also add that the project is done. The units are sitting, waiting to be used.
Six units, not eight?
The six units, not eight. In addition to that, the commission should be aware that there's an affordable housing agreement that was entered into between the city and Dr. Horton where we, Dr. Horton agreed that any six market rate units would be held, and we would not issue a final C of O on those six market rate units until the affordable units had been sold. So in addition to the six affordable units that are currently empty and not, have not been sold, because this item has not been resolved, there's also six market rate units that are also in limbo, if you will, until this issue is resolved, so.
So what about the eight? Then, two of those would then turn into a total of eight?
Yeah, I mean, Dr. Horton is, that's an option that they presented, so that is an option. I'm sure they're prepared to accommodate eight, but.
So Mr. King, when they first came to us in 2016 for the project to begin, that was part of the agreement that they would create these affordable housing, extremely low, low, and so on. So then, there, it felt like there was a bit of a hardship in selling them to be so inexpensive that most of those people unfortunately couldn't even be able to afford the HOA, et cetera, et cetera. So it came back before the Planning Commission to at least look at eight units at moderate. And that made a lot more sense. I know, as you said, that the Planning Commission did make a recommendation. Is it, is it, is there, do we have an understanding why the City Council did not approve that? Or is there, is there any, to help us understand the situation? Why did the council not take that and move forward with it? Do we know why, or?
Yeah, I was at that meeting, and the council didn't really indicate why. They weren't in favor of the eight-unit option. They just did not adopt the ordinance that would have amended the specific plan and amend the.
It needed a vote, and there was a complete no, no pass?
Yeah.
Am I correct in that it did actually approve, it was approved at the first reading?
Yeah, ordinances require two readings.
Right.
At the first reading, it was introduced. El Segundo's policy is typically that one council member can introduce an ordinance. And at the second reading, it did not get a majority vote in favor of adoption. So the ordinance died, if you will. And then, since then, Dr. Horton has been in contact with the City Manager's Office and our office to come up with a new plan. Obviously, staff does not think that presenting an eight-unit moderate option to the City Council is going to have any, there might not be any change at the City Council, which is one of the reasons why staff is recommending the in-lu fee at this point. And the city manager can definitely discuss his plans for the use of those funds. I think staff, all of us agree that the funds could really go much farther than, than the eight, six or eight units at the project.
Okay, then maybe we'll ask you, Mr. Mitnick, if you could explain how that would work?
Sure.
Because one of the, one of the issues that has always been before the Planning Commission over all these years has been the, you know, that regional housing. And, and there's very, very little new construction. And if you give these up, these, this opportunity up, where does that come from? And how do we actually comply with the state of California and their requirements?
Commissioner, were you about to say something?
I had an unrelated question, so go ahead and answer that.
I appreciate where you're coming from, and you got the staff report, you're reading this, you're probably scratching your head wondering what's happening here and why. I believe it was my first meeting as city manager that that second reading was taking place. And so that was my introduction to this issue, crash course. Bottom line, it makes far more sense to do the in-lu fee if the goal is to obtain as many affordable housing units in El Segundo and further our ability to ultimately comply with the new RENA numbers.
Okay, so explain to us then what could actually be, affordable housing doesn't have to be ownership?
Correct.
Okay.
And this, this is a, an area of local government that I have a great deal of experience and a lot of scar tissue and a lot of muscle memory when things went sideways. And I will tell you, the trend in California is to move away from owner-occupied affordable housing units. That may seem a little bit hard to understand at first.
No, no, that makes sense.
It's very difficult and cumbersome to have owner-occupied affordable housing units for the local government to manage and control and be on top of. But actually, and it can be hard for some to understand at times, but for the families. Because what happens to qualify can be challenging. But once you're in, if you're an owner-occupant, and you're getting a unit below market. And I lived this in a previous city, and I was in a council chambers and we dealt with one family, literally where the mom and dad were there after many years crying that they couldn't sell the unit at market rate. So what happens is you come in, you buy it at a lower rate based on your income. Over time, values rise, right? So the, the goal is to realize the American dream. You want to ultimately be in that, you want to get into the market rate housing at some point. So if you come in and you get one of these units, let's just, I'm just going to pick numbers.
Sure, just random.
Say, say market rate is, for simple purposes, say 500,000, and they can get in at 250. Five years later, they want to sell, their circumstances have changed, they want to buy a market rate place. That, the median jumps from 500 to, say, a million. They don't get the gain in the value, because the only gain they'll get is what happened with income levels. That's the way the rules work. So that unit at two, at, what did I say?
250.
250. I lived this, it was very stressful at the time. Say it jumps to, they're only allowed to go to 300, but they really should go to 500. But they're not able to go because of that restriction. So they're further behind in the market. If they're, if the goal of these individuals is to stay in that unit forever, for the full 20 years, then that, that's good for, for them. But after 20 years, that market unit, or that affordable unit is no longer affordable, it becomes market rate.
But would that affordable unit then sell to somebody else who's in a, in a, in a more needy position as well?
Are the restrictions that it just goes on the market, at market rate, or?
Yeah, after, after 20 years, it would go, it would not be affordable anymore.
Yeah.
That's also within our control, right? We can set the amount of time that those units, that covenant has to stay in place.
The current agreement as it is is set at 20 years.
It was 20, I thought it was 30.
Yeah, the way it was explained to me, 20. Okay, so it can work out, maybe if they stay there and they, and that family has no aspiration to move on during those 20 years. Also, you get more bang for your buck when you get, when you get the in-lu payment, if you get enough. And at 5.3, if it costs, what, $500,000 on average to build an affordable unit if you're in a decent-sized project? So just if you do the math, if you have 5 million, at 500,000, you could do 10 units. So by, by using.
You have to buy land, you have to.
It depends. I'm just saying, on average, it costs about 500,000. I didn't want to do this and get deep in the details, but by lever, by, by taking the cash and building an affordable housing fund, and we could partner then with an affordable housing builder, we could buy, there's many options. We don't have a plan right now.
Okay.
We would be banking the money. Because in El Segundo, we don't have a, a housing authority. Many cities have a housing authority, or they're part of a housing authority, or, or they have a nonprofit that builds them. We have little to no experience here in El Segundo in terms of producing affordable housing units. This is the first.
And that's sort of the problem, that's sort of the problem that we're, we're up against.
Yeah, so by putting, by having the money, we then have leverage. We can then find a housing authority or a nonprofit to help us to either acquire a project. There's other developments coming down the pipeline, and they will also be paying into this.
I, I, I would be more interested in your explaining to us how rental versus ownership would work.
Oh, okay. So rental is, if, when you have developments and you have rentals, you can put longer covenants. You can have 50 years, 55-year covenants.
So who owns the property?
It would be, it would be the housing authority or the nonprofit would be the owner.
That doesn't exist yet.
That does not exist at this point in time.
And if it was part of, then incorporated into a larger multifamily project, that developer still owns those units, right? So say a market rate developer builds 200 units.
It, it would depend.
And a portion of that's affordable.
And I've seen, I've have experienced all, many different varieties or variations on the theme. My experience has been with housing authorities and nonprofit providers, Habitat for Humanity, that type of thing. In some case, you can have a private developer and owner, and you have restrictions on the unit. And then the units can be managed by a nonprofit. And there's.
I just, I just find it, it, you know, the, there, I, there's two sides to the coin here, I think. Because if you have the, you have these, you know, these beautiful condos that are, they've done a very, very nice job. And then you've got restrictions on a certain portion of them that have been really limited rather than the free market to allow, you know, your neighbors, and it becomes a bidding war. And then, you know, real estate in that area becomes, you know, really rich and lush with people investing and, you know, pride of ownership. But I do know that the city of El Segundo is having a really hard time trying to qualify for the.
RENA.
RENA, for the regional housing issue. And, and again, except for maybe East of Sepulveda, it's going to, at some point, this is just, as a, as a, as a general consumer, maybe developed, there may be an opportunity there. We don't have the opportunity a lot for new development.
You're right.
To allow for people in El Segundo of moderate income to qualify for, for homeownership.
It, correct.
And I don't know what a half a million, what's a half a million dollars really going to do?
I threw that out because in general terms, new construction, that's what they say for affordable housing, for one or two-bedroom units, that's what we're looking at, on average, for construction. I don't want to be held to that, I was just doing that by way of math, so you can see in this, in this instance. So the options for us, we know we have some other housing projects, apartments that are going through the application process, and there would be an affordable component to that, or an in-lu payment.
Is that, is that just something that's going to be automatic with developers as we begin to move through this process in this town?
Oh, I would, I would say so.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I, I've, I have experience using the density bonuses and getting in-lu payments, and oftentimes in-lu payments significantly above what's normally required. Because it's, because it's a math game to make the numbers work. There are, you could, there are apartment buildings in El Segundo that might come up on, for sale, and they could be acquired and renovated and used as affordable, for affordable units.
And, and how would that fund of, say, a half million dollars of, in this instance, how would that be used? Would the city then be purchasing or partnering, as you say, with a?
In an ideal world, we would not be in that business.
Right.
We would partner with a nonprofit, or perhaps there's a housing authority adjacent to us or nearby or a nonprofit that could come in here, we could be part of it and take advantage of economies of scale. I, I have been made aware that there, there's a couple nonprofits in the general.
So what would the difference be at that time than right now with these, with this opportunity?
So I would encourage you not to look at it like we're losing six units or eight units. We're gaining resources that will go into a housing fund that will allow us to further grow that and then eventually partner with a nonprofit entity to produce more units, either through rehabbing an existing development or constructing something new.
So if I might, just for a minute, because I have some experience in affordable housing as well, but I've typically worked with, I've worked with a nonprofit, affordable housing developer, low-income housing tax credits, and a for-profit, low-income housing tax credits. For those types of developers, they typically need scale, right? Because if you're going after federal tax credits, then you have to, it's an economies of scale. So a 10-unit project would never qualify for them. I imagine there are some smaller nonprofits out there that do it. As I would feel better if I knew that we'd identified them, that they're capable to do this, that this is a real plan.
Well, and, and to the extent that we are landlocked, and certainly with zoning right now, do these density bonuses that you described, do those require additional zoning for higher density in those areas that we can do it? In other words, if we, you know, if, if we've got single-family, or I'm sorry, multifamily that's zoned for, you know, four per acre or something, those things are going to, those numbers are going to have to change.
The density bonus will push up the number. So what we're dealing with, and the reason this is a tough discussion, it's a chicken and egg. You know, what, and how, in terms of getting started to do this. This, look, this, this situation presented itself, or existed. And what's best for producing affordable housing over the long haul is to start building the fund. And then we have to go out and find a partner to make this happen. We have no choice but to deal with these RENA numbers. Right now, there's no teeth. There will be teeth.
What year is that? What year do we need to?
I don't know the answer. We do know, is it Huntington Beach is now facing litigation over this, this issue?
Yeah.
Which you, what, in discussing this issue with my colleagues and looking at what's going out there for cities, you don't want to be a sitting duck, you don't want to be a target. And I have to be careful what I say here, but because we're a jobs-rich community and we're adding more and more jobs and we're not producing housing units, we become a target.
Do you think that, is there the potential that we're more targeted? Because we have vacant units built, set aside for affordable housing that we're potentially deciding not to fill with affordable?
I'm not sure I follow that.
So there are 12 vacant units right now, townhomes.
Okay.
Built, ready for occupancy, right? Originally, there were six, then we approved eight, council one time approved eight. But there are 12 that are currently vacant that could be used for affordable housing. If we then say, we're not going to do that, we're going to take the funds instead, do we potentially jeopardize our position even more with the state that they say you had an opportunity to do something?
I mean, I, good question. I would say over the long haul, I don't think so. Because if we turn around in relatively short order, find a nonprofit partner, and we start making things happen, we'll be in better, in better shape. You are right about economies of scale. I've been in cities where they do much larger projects, but I've also seen smaller projects done. We get it. We have no choice but to deal with this. And we talk about it as an executive team, we talk about it with City Council. We've had this, we've talked about the parameters of this proposal with Dr. Horton, with council in closed session. They're, they're aware of the, the terms of this. I appreciate where you're coming from, but it's my professional opinion, with many years of redevelopment and affordable housing experience, this is a better way to go. My, my recommendation to council is not to be involved in any way, shape, or form with owner-occupied affordable housing units. They're too complicated to manage, we don't get the full bang for our buck, and they're, they don't help our RENA numbers over the long haul. That's my professional opinion.
So the RENA numbers that are currently in the, the plan right now, I think they're 71 units? And what timeframe is that? Does the state mandate that we need to fill those 71 units? Does anybody know the answer to that?
They, they do come in cycles, and I'm trying to remember how many years.
I think it goes through 2021.
Yeah, but I don't remember when it started, that's the thing.
2014, maybe?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
And that's based on our current.
And that's the current cycle, and then our number is 69. The next cycle starts in 2021, we're looking at over 500.
Yeah.
Over 500?
Not all affordable though, right?
I mean, from 69 to 500?
About 400, about 400 of them will be affordable. But we're not, we're not, we're not the only one. We're not the only one. The other cities.
I understand that, but still, you know, that just.
Yeah, absolutely.
So these opportunities are, right now, we are mandated for 12 modern income.
Right.
And so what we're talking about is eight of those 12 and being able to qualify.
I think, I think when the, when the number.
Check it off, hold on.
When the numbers were 69, and I think, I don't know, it was like 50 were affordable, I think, you know, it was important for us to have a plan. And, and when you have projects like this, if we can get four, six, eight, you know, somehow hoping to get to 50. But when you're talking about a number that's, I think the number is 523, I think from the, from the state's perspective, I think it's important for us to have a plan. And, and to, to, to work with six for-sale ownership units, where it just seems like it's not a great plan to get to that number. And I think if we, if we took these in-lu payment and, and added additional projects and given an opportunity to take additional in-lu payment from these other projects to, and then I think we start to gather a plan to put in substantial number of affordable housing units. And we think, we think that's a better plan.
That's a great question, though. Is there some sort of formalized in-lu? So say that we do this, then going forward, how is that incorporated as an in-lu payment across the board? Because there aren't that many large-scale residential developments planned going forward.
We've talked to a few, and, you know, specifically from the Planning and Building Safety Department, we are recommending that as part of the discussion about these large apartment units, that affordable housing and, and, and contributing to the overall plan to comply with affordable housing requirement is part of the discussion.
So then, Sam, you've got that knowledge.
Right.
And obviously, then, without disclosing who it is that's knocking on your door.
Right.
What sorts of numbers do you see that you should have projected in two and a half, five years? I mean, I don't know what the number would be. What, I mean, if you start with a half a million dollars from this project, in five years, where do you think the city will be?
I, you know, I can't, I can't say.
I know, but you, you're saying you have so many projects.
But what I can.
Potentially the discussion.
What I can say is, I believe, I believe when we talk to the nonprofit organizations that can come to our city, help us with this issue, we feel, staff feels that we will help more families or more projects than. help us with this issue, we feel, staff feels that we will help more families or more projects than six units.
Well, this, this whole new ADU thing is also a component of this.
Yeah.
And that's gotta be a factor.
It is?
Well, I mean, where are these five hundred units gonna come from?
Well, is that, is that true? Some of the ADUs are able to be, to be counted towards the five hundred and?
I'm not saying ADUs are the solution, but they've gotta be a component of the solution. I'm sure that's what the state is expecting.
Yeah, and we're, we're looking at that very carefully because there's almost, I mean, obviously, there's no place to squeeze five hundred units if you're not looking at ADUs.
Right. I'm glad the number jumped up to five point three, was that, how did that happen?
That was done through negotiations. We, we hired an outside consultant, Kaiser Marston, Marston. And we used an individual that, that both Mark and I have worked with over the years and we were able to get a more realistic number.
And that's roughly the market rate of those six units right now, is that about right?
It was a number that worked in negotiations and it's really to the city's advantage. This is a very good number, by the way, in this type of negotiation. And it will allow, allow the applicant to go forward with the project to sell the rest of their units. So it's, it's a result of negotiations.
Gotcha. Also, I gotta ask the question, the lawsuit that happened, or at least began, can you fill us in a little bit on that, Mr. King?
Yeah, I, I can. So one caveat to one thing the city manager said earlier was, this matter was discussed in closed session, but only because of the context of litigation. D.R. Horton challenged the city on the actions taken at the council meeting over the summer. I don't really wanna discuss the merits of the case, but if the city council was to approve the proposal from D.R. Horton, that would resolve the lawsuit. So that should not really factor into the planning commission or the city council's decision. Because D.R. Horton has presented two options, you have the options available to you. But if the project moves forward, if one of the options is selected, then the lawsuit would presumably go away.
If either option is selected or only if the in lieu payment is selected?
Uh, no, D.R. Horton presented both options. Again, staff was the one that, you know, the city manager's office, staff is recommending the in lieu fee. I think from a timing perspective, the eight moderate units would take several months to implement. From a timing perspective, the in lieu fee is very attractive. And again, the council, the city council rejected the eight, eight moderate units, you know, over the summer. So that option's already been presented and, and it didn't, it didn't pass. So, but no, D.R. Horton presented both options. And so, you know, obviously, the settlement could, you know, take a different direction, but my understanding is that the lawsuit will be settled if, if one of the options is selected and ultimately approved.
Okay, are there any other questions at this time from the DIAS? And then we will open up for a public hearing? All right, we'll do that. Thank you, Ms. Mitnick. We will now open up for any comments from the public? Anybody would like to approach? Yes, please come up, state your name.
Michael Early, thank you for your time. I'm sure the city is aware that SB fifty is moving through the state legislator, which is gonna force you to allow all kinds of housing in places you don't want it to be unless you create a better program now, you've got two years to do it. And something like this, where you just kick the ball down the road with five million dollars is not gonna settle anything. There's another option they could do, they can go buy a building, they can convert the building to ten units and they can rent them out. If you give them five million dollars to somebody someday down the road, the money's gonna sit there for days and days and days or years and years and years and no one's gonna have any more affordable housing. As you know, the housing in this town is being depleted for anybody who is not a serious money earner and two, for both people in the, in the family, both are breadwinners. So I think you should consider a third option, that is, let them go find a property, let them. Because where are they gonna put a ten, ten-unit building, the property, ten-unit building in this city that you're gonna approve? You're gonna have to start approving bigger projects other places. But you have the power now to say, you build it, we'll approve it, you put it in Smoky Hollow, you put it at East of PCH, wherever you wanna put it, but you put it someplace.
So Mr. Early, can I just ask for clarification? You're, you're saying to, ask the city to ask the developer?
Yes.
To buy something, develop it and create it, make it happen?
Eight or ten unit parking building and they can run it or they can give it to, they can give it to somebody? They can give it to a nonprofit to run, let them handle it. Why is the city gonna take this five million, sit on it, try to find somebody to do it? Why, it's not your responsibility. They made an agreement when they got this project approved to provide this housing. Now they're trying to kick the ball down the road and that's not right. Now let them figure it out. And there's definitely a lot of places that I've been, I'm also a Realtor, and a lot of places where people buy properties, they do affordable off-site and they provide it back to the city or whatever management district you have.
I don't know what affordable off-site means, what does that mean?
You buy another building and you make affordable there. And you don't do it inside of your project, you find another.
Oh, I'm with you, I, I, it's what you're saying, I got you.
So you buy it out by Sepulveda, even on this side of Sepulveda, an older building, rehab it, do ten units there and then give that building to a nonprofit that they take care of, not that the city is involved with. Because then you get too politics involved in this stuff and it shouldn't be. They agreed to do this, they agreed to provide housing and now they're trying to just buy their way out of it. And I don't think the city should allow that to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Early.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
My name is Lisa Varela. I'm a resident of El Segundo and I've lived here for five years. I'm a veteran, I work two jobs so that I can stay living in El Segundo. And I think what the gentleman just said before us is they made an agreement to make these affordable houses affordable and they should be held to that. I don't earn enough to live in El Segundo. My rent went from a thousand dollars five years ago to eighteen seventy-five right now. I have been part of the community and I wanna stay part of the community. And I think that there are people that have moderate incomes that can't live here, we can't buy here. And I think it's not fair that if you make an agreement to do something, that now you're gonna try to do something different. And I think it's not just about the business, it's about the people that need this as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Rachel Edsilla. I've lived in El Segundo for about eleven years. I also started a small business here a few years ago to help to be able to afford living in El Segundo. I love this community, it's changing a lot. And I agree, like if they should honor what they agreed to do to develop in this place to begin with. I'm concerned with the idea of taking money, purchasing outside of the, the property as it stands because I feel like that would start, you know, that would start the creation of like the projects kinda thing. And I think it's better for our community if people are integrated and, you know, having varying levels of income and being able to make friends and kind of, you know, because one of the things I loved about El Segundo was it was really a community feel here. There, my neighbors are retired, my neighbors are younger than I am, my neighbors are in my same range. It's a very special community. And I'm sad to see it go the way of maybe Manhattan Beach or someplace like that where you have blue collar workers, people who are really, really affluent, you know, not able to intermingle any longer because you're being priced out for housing. So I hope you'll take that into consideration. I'm happy to run my little business and get things going. I love this place, it's a wonderful community. And I, I would hope that there would still be some accessibility to people who are like myself, who are not necessarily born with the silver spoon, but definitely are go-getters. Thank you.
Can you tell us real quick what your business is? Because if Ryan Baldino was here, he would say there's a vast viewing audience that might be clients.
It's called Rainu Creative Developments and I do art therapy work and also do art education work and my own artwork.
Very cool.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kelsey and.
Kelsey, what's your last name?
Stewart, sorry.
Kelsey Stewart, thanks.
Spelled correctly, S.T.U.R.T.
Good job, kiddo.
Just something I wanted to propose to, as you guys are trying to figure out, I'm not gonna tell you what to do, but just something to think about from a perspective kinda like what Rachel talked about is oftentimes it is better for the whole community if you have a mixed income. And so I would just encourage you, if you have an opportunity, look at that research, talk to some social workers. Most social workers will tell you that you want integrated. You don't want people separated, like, okay, all of you low-income people are gonna be over here. You want mixed income units so that people can do what she said. And so that's just something, as you're deciding, I would just really encourage you to either research it or talk to some social workers and just understand that in the whole context, yes, and we may not get as many, but I feel like quality is better than quantity. If we're just trying to check a box, then yeah, just go build something. But if you wanna make a community, if you wanna really help people, not just provide housing, that's one part, but people need more than housing. People need a community, they need something to belong to and to be part of and that can be provided if you have a mixed income unit. Whereas if you're all the same, you're all in the same ditch, you're all just those low-income properties over here, they don't have that same. And so it's just a beautiful thing when you can mix incomes, ethnicities, everything together in a, in a giant mixing pot. And so I just would encourage you guys, as you move forward and as you're decisions, to look at that. So I just wanna thank you and thank you for all that you guys do and for all the hard work.
Thank you very much. How about anybody else? There we go. Hi.
Hi, my name's Kyle Wood, I'm a sixth grade teacher at El Segundo Middle School.
Kyle Wood?
Kyle Wood.
Kyle Wood, there you go.
And I've been teaching there for five years now. And when this, you know, whole thing came about, I have been coming to every meeting. I've, I had the mayor's son, I know other people on the council I've been talking to. Because I'm very excited about it because I would love to own in El Segundo. Thirty-one years old, I'm still priced out of the market as a teacher, it's, you know, one of those things. So an opportunity to buy at this level is a very exciting opportunity and to then live here. Because, you know, I would love to live here, I don't plan on, you know, at the moment, don't plan on coming to live here because I can't afford it. And as someone who plans on being at the school for my career, I would love to be able to live in the same city that I teach. So I think one of that's a big issue following a lot of communities currently in California. So I would like to urge you to revisit and go back to this eight units. Even if I'm not lucky and win the lottery to get one, at least someone else, even some people here might, you know, have that opportunity. So I think by providing that opportunity is better than taking away the opportunity currently because those units are there, I've been driving by them all the time, when is someone gonna live in there? So, that's what I would say, thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
My name is Kelly Griffin, resident of El Segundo. I have a question as far as, since this is a new, if you will, mandate by the state, what are other communities, our sizes are comparable, how are they handling it? And I'm assuming you're looking at that, but.
Affordable housing issue, you mean?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Just curious if that is something that's ongoing, that we are looking at other communities that have had some success? And options, but anyway.
You, you, you guys deal with that, that's sort of your business? I know that we've been talking about it here, certainly in planning commission meetings for a long time, and how to qualify and how is it that we're actually going to be able to create this sort of housing? And there really hasn't been an answer. We've got a new development and.
Hit a snag.
Pardon?
Hit a snag.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically.
Yeah, so our new development, but now, this is the first time I'm hearing that the numbers have changed from roughly sixty or seventy up to now five hundred. So that, the scale of things is, is unbelievable.
Kelly, answer your question, I think there's probably not a more important topic in California right now. And so every community is looking at each other. I'm involved in a, a national program where we look at affordable housing. And so communities are trying to figure this out. It's, it's a big, serious problem, so we're, we're on it.
Okay, right, okay. And if I may just throw out one thing, I don't know if you probably have heard of the Villages of Cabrillo in Long Beach, a project that was done with the city of Long Beach with other, I think the Veterans Administration and there are other groups, nonprofit groups that have all come together and they do offer housing for either homeless people or people with different backgrounds and issues, so.
And tell us about that, what do you, what do you know about it?
I don't really know.
Is it working?
It is working. It's called the Villages, I believe it's the Villages of Cabrillo in Long Beach, something like that. But I did actually go and check it out and it does have veterans and then it has families who were previously homeless and then there are other groups. But it looks basically like a campus. And it's, I guess, people of all mixed backgrounds and incomes, so just to throw that out there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Hi, my name's Dawn Sohegan. I'm actually a resident at nine three four Sheldon. I am involved in a lawsuit against D.R. Horton. So for them to get what they want, taking away, giving them anything that they want at this point, I think is moot until you make sure that the residents that have resulted in damaged homes and neglect and just a nightmare situation for the last two and a half years, I think we need to be taken care of first, instead of patting the pockets of people that don't deserve it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Rachel. It's me again, Rachel Edsilla. I had a question about, I, I visited before, they were about, the property was about eighty percent, at eighty percent capacity. And I'm thinking about, if they're worried about time and getting this thing going, that sort of thing, I mean, I don't really think any amount would be an issue in terms of rolling it out for people to be able to apply and to qualify to get these units sold. But I'm curious like where they're at now in terms of their capacity, so.
You're talking about the, the D.R. Horton project at Imperial?
Yeah.
They, they have, as we understand.
They were at eighty percent maybe three or four months ago.
You know, of the multifamily units, six affordable and six market rate are vacant.
So twelve are left.
Yeah.
Oh, so that's it?
Yeah.
Out of thirty-four, yes? Yeah, thirty-four.
Okay, so interesting, you know, in terms of the motivation. But I'm thinking that this could be met, like it's not an issue for people to be able to qualify for those affordable units in whatever parameter of time.
Right, and there were some, there were some parameters that were, that were discussed about people that, that, people that lived in El Segundo, worked in El Segundo, veterans, servicemen and women.
Most of those were not permissible. Veterans, I think, was the one that was, the others would be discriminatory.
It's just, it's just, okay, because then, then that would read differently in that, that was discussed, right?
Greg's right about that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Rachel.
And just to clarify, when Dawn came up before, the lawsuit she described is different than the one that we talked about that they brought against the city council, right?
Different lawsuit.
If you wanna address? You can come up and address the podium if you'd like, come on up. State your name, come on up, state your name.
Mike Mesa, I live at nine two eight Sheldon. And I'm just saying, you know, there's a few of them and that's why there's been issues also with the city council. I don't think, what you guys, I don't know why they, you guys didn't look and see why they didn't approve it? Somebody had said? Why they didn't approve it?
I asked why.
I think there's a conflict, a couple conflicts between them. And that's why they weren't, they made a comment, we can't see accepting this when we have residents that are having problems. That was one of the issues why they didn't approve it.
Anything else, Mr. Mesa? Okay, okay, thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Early?
I just wanted to ask, Michael Early, resident, I wanted to ask one question, it's not directly related to this, but I heard a rumor that they approved the changing over, converting the giant aerospace building out there at the end, five hundred thousand square feet to housing, I mean, to offices, is that correct?
Mr. McClain?
The old Northrop Grumman building?
Yes.
Several years ago, that was sold by Northrop Grumman to Hackman. Um, several years ago, that was sold by Northrop Grumman to, um, Hackman Capital, and they have been refurbishing it and...
To offices.
To offices, yeah.
So we're looking at five hundred thousand square feet of office. If you take it down to ten-by-ten office for most people, that's five thousand off, uh, new people coming to town to work. And if you cut that down to half secretaries and all that, look at seven thousand and ten thousand people coming to work out there. Where are they going to live? There's, they have to live here somewhere. We can't just keep creating jobs and not housing. So I think, you know, something like this is important to have locations where the people can go who are not the high-end people who are working out there. The people who are going to work here for jobs. If you're going to create, let ten thousand jobs come to this town, you guys have got to figure an answer way before it happens. Because otherwise, it's just going to inundate the city, and the state's going to come along and say, you have to do it. I don't know if you're aware or not, but the new ADU, ADU laws now allow ADU buildings on any property that's residential. So triplexes, fourplexes, sixteenplexes, and if you've got a eightplex, you can actually put three new ADUs on there. So those are going to count for a lot of your spaces. You can count for your tally, but they're not going to count for five thousand people coming here or ten thousand people coming here. And we have to find a way to start looking down the road at a, at a concrete plan. Otherwise, the state's going to come in there and tell you, anyone can do whatever they want, because we need housing.
I think that developers have also recognized this, and so there, there's, there are some projects that, um, that, that have spoken to city staff, and they're, they're, they're extremely more dense than the, these types of projects.
And, and, and we can't do the economic development without those housing equations. I mean, it's, it's got to be a part of it, so I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Early. Last chance, anybody else like to address? Okay. With that, we will close public communication. Public comments are closed. And I think, um, all the other comments should come here from the dais. So, um, I, I think we're just going to have to have sort of a random open talk about, um, where we stand, what we feel is going to be in best interest for the city and for the people that live here and work here. Um, I, I'm, I feel that they entered into this, um, agreement, and at the time, we only needed seventy units, not the five hundred. And I just feel like, you know, that they, that they should, they should... Actually, are we supposed to open this up for, um, the applicant to?
I, I think that's a...
I think it's a very wise idea. The applicant is here, would they like to address the commission? I'm sorry. I know you're prepared. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. Um, I'm Mary Ann Adriatico, Division Council and Vice President for D.R. Horton, Southern California.
Mary Ann, what's your last name?
Adriatico.
Thank you.
Like the Adriatic C with an O.
Got it.
So back when the initial conditions of approval were, were approved by the city, and there was agreement to provide the six affordable units, two at extremely low, two at very low, and two at low. I don't think we had the full universe of facts at the time, what the constraints were financially for some of these households. We'd like to qualify to buy for, to buy these homes, and...
Were you aware, I'm just saying, we can just randomly chat about this.
Well, and that was two thousand seventeen, is that correct?
Two thousand...
Two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen. So we, we, we had no idea. You know, we didn't know our HOA dues would be upwards of, close to four hundred dollars.
But you do typically go in, when you go to a city, and this is something that you can enter in with other cities, because you develop a lot.
Do you have any other projects that have an inclusionary housing component like that?
We do. We've had it in Clermont. Um, I want to say we've had it in Yorba Linda. And even in those circumstances, while we were able to sell some of the homes, we weren't able to qualify some households for a couple. And at that point, the agreement with the city was to actually have a sunset date for when we would try to get these homes sold and closed. And at that point, if they couldn't be, then the city takes them over.
So knowing that, going into this agreement, why agree to six very low-income units from the start?
I think at the time, it was an agreement that was made with the city and the developer, D.R. Horton, because that's what we knew at that point. Because we weren't, at that point, I don't think the market had hit what it's hitting right now in the city of El Segundo. Where we're talking about a brand-new house, a two-bedroom, that's close to nine hundred fifty thousand at market va- market rate.
That was two thousand sixteen?
Mm-huh.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, and we spent close to, I want to say, over two years trying to figure out a solution to this affordable program that would be acceptable to the city and that would actually be practical to implement. We've hired consultants, the city's hired their own consultants, and we've taken a look at, you know, the various income limits for the extremely low, very low, and low. Looked at the sort of monthly costs and living expenses that they would have to, to pay, and at the same time, trying to service a mortgage. And we just didn't see it sustainable for these households. I mean, we would set them up for failure for these homes, and that's, you know, we don't want that. This was your first affordable housing program in the city. We didn't have any, I don't think anybody here had very much experience with an affordable housing program. So we were all kind of trying to figure out at that time what's going to work. So two years, we spent going back with different options. We were here, I want to say January, with the in-lube, January of last year, with the in-lube proposal. We had met with the city prior to that. We had met with a nonprofit, Abode Communities, about what they could do with that in-lube fee. And in response to some of the, the questions that came up with, well, the cost of trying to buy the land and build a house. In our discussions with Abode and the city, which is the nonprofit, they were talking about what they could do with three-point-three, which was what we had proposed. And with that, they said they can actually leverage that to get grants from various other governmental groups to build and pos- build new construction rental programs that they would administer, and then, or rehab existing buildings. And on a larger scale. So you go from six units to something broader that could actually service many more families that would like to live here in the city of El Segundo. So we looked at different options. So it wasn't like we didn't spend the time nor put the thought into it. We've worked very closely with staff to, to look at the different options, and that's why we came back with our application today with the eight moderate-income units and the in-lube fee. And we're putting it before the commission to decide what's in the best interest of the city in the long term. So we're prepared to go with either option. Um, but, you know, staff, the staff report details the reasons for the benefits of an in-lube fee for the long term. It provides a greater range of options for the city, a lot more flexibility in, in the type of affordable housing programs that could be implemented here. And so, you know, we would favor that. We've come up from the three-point-three to five-point-three. And you can only imagine the extra two million, what that could do in conjunction with a nonprofit to leverage that amount of money to be able to service a broader group of families here. So that's what we're ta- we're trying to do as we collect more data and sort of get a real picture of the, the situation here. That's why we've had to move away from the six sort of extremely low, very low, and low-income units. We're, we're he- we're here to support an affordable housing program. We're not certainly trying to skirt our obligation to do that. I've heard multiple times that we're trying to get out of our agreement, under the Affordable Housing Agreement, to provide affordable housing. I don't think that's necessarily the case. We've been trying, two years. So we'd like to see a path forward, um, and that's our goal, and it's not to make money, because we're not making money on these units. Um, and we just want to put our, we have buyers, they're just not, they're sitting there, and they can't move into their homes because this issue's still unresolved. So... Are there any other questions, or?
Is D.R. Horton the largest home builder in America?
We are currently the largest home builder by volume in, in America. And I, I want to mention, sort of the focus of D.R. Horton in terms of its home building, is providing affordable housing. So that's why you see us building a lot in the inland empire where we could provide homes that are affordable to, to families. And, you know, your city's just such a unique gem, and that's why a lot of families are just priced out of this market. And I think with five-point-three million, you can actually make housing opportunities. They may not be ownership, but they're still housing opportunities for a broader group of families.
I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Or comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Um... I'm interested, Michelle, your thoughts, because this is sort of your bailiwick, if I could.
I do have some thoughts.
I'd like to hear them.
Trying to articulate them.
Yeah.
Bring them down. So I think I have a logistical and a philosophical issue with the in-lube payment over sticking with our original eight moderate units. So logistically, the city of El Segundo will have to identify a partner, identify a property, qualify low-income households, have some sort of an agreement with the nonprofit to, you know, either they're going to operate it and own it wholly, or we're still going to be engaged throughout the process. There's a timing concern with that. We don't know when that's going to happen. Um, I just, I think it's kicking the can down the road. I'm concerned that the state is aggressively enforcing this, as they should be, and there are vacant, built, beautiful units. Philosophically, I also believe in mixed-income housing very much. I believe in diversity of housing options. So, yes, I think that rental, low-income housing is the best way to accommodate large numbers of low-income families. But moderate income doesn't necessarily fit into that rental bucket, right? I mean, these are people who are renting actively in El Segundo, and their mortgage might ultimately be less than their rent as a moderate-income household. They want to stay here. I mean, hello, Mr. Wood, thank you for teaching our sixth graders who are hard enough to parent, let alone a hundred and fifty of those kids every day, right? I mean, that's who we want, to be living in our community. And so if I can even assist in any way in making that happen, I would, that's my primary goal. I think the other part, and this is a little bit maybe dating and crying over spilt milk, but the five million dollars would really, it's not the city to have, it's the school districts. So when that land was sold, there were offers based off of what all these developers could afford to pay, and that included affordable housing. And they all would have paid five million dollars more to not have to have affordable housing. And so the school district would have walked away with twenty-eight million versus twenty-three million. So that, I mean, that's kind of maybe not either here nor there, because that's already happened. That's part of the equation.
Yeah, sure.
So, um, I also would like to take time to talk to council to really better understand, like, it passed. And I, I feel culpable to some degree, because I attended, I heard the first meeting in June, and then I just went away, because I thought it passed. The arguments were not anything that couldn't have been fleshed out. They were about how the lottery would work, how it would fundamentally work, not that this was a bad idea. Um, and then it just completely went sideways, and I was not paying attention to that. So I would like the time to understand from council what the real issue was.
Well, maybe we could have somebody come as a representative to further explain that, so that there's complete transparency, and then everybody is on the same page, and here's the same discussions, and, and, uh, I think that's a, I think that's a healthy idea.
Because it was a consent item.
Right.
That got pulled, and that was in July. So I think I'm, I am candidly frustrated as well, because we're in January of twenty-twenty. You know, those families could have been identified, moved in, done deal.
Mr. Jay, Mr. Heschel?
Yeah, so when this started back in January, um, as you guys may know, I'm part of the Urban Land Institute, which is sort of a national think tank on, on real estate issues. Affordable housing, it was quite obvious that affordable housing was going to be a big issue here in El Segundo. It certainly is in the state. So I started looking at other cities as to how they handled it. Uh, visited Nashville, visited Seattle. And these cities have not nailed it, but they're getting there. They're, 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 they're trying to make some real headway on this. And by and large, it's handled with for-rent property. They, they dappled in for-sale units, and it's just, it's fraught with problems. Mr. Bitnick explained what happens when you bring a, 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 a unit in at well below market, and that unit needs to stay at that below-market rate. And so, um, with all respect to, to Mr. Wood, who's trying to buy a house here, you buy a house for three hundred grand, you're still at three hundred grand. You can't parlay that to another, you know, a, a million-dollar house without significant income difference. And so it's just, it's complicated. For, for sale, affordable housing is complicated. I truly believe rental is the way to solve these big numbers, because that's the, that's where we'll have the most units to, to play with or to, to make available to the public. So, um, while I approved the, uh, the notion of eight units back in, um, sorry, back in March or April, or whenever we did that, uh, I just have since studied it a lot more and just firmly believe that rental is the, is the way to do it. So, um, now, that said, five-point-three million dollars is great. To me, the big question is, what is the city going to do with this five-point-three million dollars? Where's the foundation? Where is the housing authority? And to me, that is the big thing that has to be solved. I think there needs to be a emergency committee put on this thing. You know, if this thing sits fallow for a year, uh, I, I'm very concerned about Michelle's comment about what is the state going to say? Well, jeez, you guys took away these six units. You, you not only are not solving the problem, you made it worse. And so I'm deeply concerned about that. So, uh, having some sort of a fast-track method of putting together a plan for, uh, for affordable housing, I think is critical in this town. So five-point-three is great, but what are we going to do with it?
Wow. We're sort of, I, I, um, how would we, how would we gain, we, planning commissioners gained further information about, should the city ultimately, ultimately, let's be very frank about it, no matter what happens here at the commission level, it's the city council that will make that final decision. So whether they, whether they, how much they would lean or rely on what our recommendation is, it's really going to be ultimately the city council. So again, I would really like to know and be, be, be further schooled on what their thoughts were, why they didn't pass that, um, you know, the, the eight units this last time that we collectively agreed and passed on to the city council. As you say, they did the first time, but at the second reading that they negated it, they just didn't pass it. So I'd like further understanding for that. I think that's going to be very important. And, uh, you know, I, I'm not a, I, I just don't know that I really, we, we entered into this agreement for affordable. I love the idea that it's modern income. I think that's a really, and, you know, would allow, um, you know, eight possibilities for some...
But, but why not low-income also? Why, why just cap it at modern income?
Well, I guess because the explanation that even if you gave extremely low and low, even if you gave it to them, they'd have a very terrible time.
That's the problem with for-sale.
Yeah.
You don't have that same issue with rental.
So if I'm remembering...
Well, so they could be, the, maybe the rental part would be the extremely low-low, and maybe you would just be...
Well, that's fine, but, but D.R. Horton's not going to turn these into rental units.
Right, but, and if I'm remembering the lottery system correctly, anybody could apply. So you could be very low-income, you could be low-income, you could be moderate. It just was up to moderate. And then that a person, family has to qualify, and then they go into the lottery pool, right? But it's not, it's not closing it off to the idea of very low income. It's just unlikely that they would qualify, right? And I totally agree, Jay. I think for, from an economies of scale side, like, to, to have the biggest bang, rental does work. I don't know that, I think five million dollars is probably going to get you...
It, it's a seed grant.
Maybe, maybe eight rental units, but not more than that.
But, but...
Not even maybe half of that.
Yeah, uh, and, and I, I do agree with Mariana that having a, starting a program, they can apply for grants. There, there are other funding sources. You know, I realize that the whole East of Sepulveda thing is a different discussion, but, you know, there, there, there are transit, uh, transit grants given by the, the, um, I guess they're density bonuses given by, by, uh, the city of Los Angeles and the county. And so there are other ways to, to find places for affordable housing. I, I just, I just believe it's rental at this point.
And I think that's fine. I just think that it would be very healthy if, if we... I just think that it would be very healthy if, if we were armed with that information about, about how it actually happens rather than just more hypothetical.
I mean, I think it's rental at some point down the road or eight for-sale units now.
Now, exactly. I'm personally in favor of the eight for-sale units today, this evening. If, um, if we're going to make a motion or move forward with that, do you, do you feel that, you feel that you are in a position to make a decision or is there further information? We can ask of staff or what, how do you, how do you guys feel?
We already saw how city council voted on it.
They didn't vote on it.
I don't think that, I really don't think that that was their issue. I think it was this whole sidebar conversation that we're not really privileged to, to be honest.
You mean the other, the other lawsuits, which, which is unrelated and absolutely unfortunate.
And I think those two things got convoluted. I'm not saying that now they wouldn't like this deal better, but at the time, I don't think that it was the deal on the table that was the problem for them.
That could be, yeah, I don't know.
Just because there wasn't any conversation, I mean, I watched the council, I went back and watched the council meeting and there was no conversation about the terms of this deal. There was a conversation about litigation, but not about this deal.
So if we were very clear about this deal and we asked city council, we kicked, we kicked it back upstairs again based on tonight's recommendation? Or is there further information that we feel that we need to garner for them and their thought process?
I, I, planning commissioners, I think, you know, the recommendation from, from staff, I think it's clear in the staff.
We know what your recommendation is for sure, Sam.
If, if you, if you disagree with that, I think you, you specify what, what you believe is the right choice is and we will, we will state that and we will address that to the council for their ultimate decision.
Just to add to that, the resolution that was in front, that was prepared only relates to the In-Lu fee. So if the planning commission wanted to recommend the eight units, I would recommend that we prepare a resolution to that effect and bring it back to you at your next meeting.
Can we not use the one that was previously prepared?
I suppose if the, if the commission just wanted to say no to the, to the recommended action, but there's just, there's nothing formally that we can transmit to the city council, which is what we've historically done. Usually we, you know, we memorialize the actions of the planning commission. I understand that the applicant is in a hurry, but we just didn't prepare a resolution for the eight moderate units.
But it exists because we approved it already.
Well, that's true.
And council approved it once already. So it's actually written to just.
I don't think the, the terms changed.
Yeah.
Well, is there a motion on the dais up here for, for any, for any, any further action?
I mean, if there was a motion to forego the In-Lu fee in favor of the eight moderate units, I would propose that, but it doesn't sound like that exists.
That's an option for us.
Let me just clarify, you can make that motion. We would just have to, traditionally what we would do is bring back a resolution that says that. And then you would adopt the resolution at the next meeting and then we take that to city council. So if that's the consensus of the planning commission, we can, we can prepare that and bring it back to you at your next meeting.
The commissioners, if with your permission, the city manager would like to add some thoughts.
Mr. Mit, of course, Mr. Mit, please, yes.
Madam Chairmembers of the, the commission, and I, I apologize, I, I didn't know I was going to be that involved or be here on this issue. You have a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts. Time is of the essence for a variety of reasons. You also have market rate buyers that are trying to close some deals on, in this development that have been held hostage and they would like to be able to move forward. If, if something different's being contemplated to have six for-sale units or eight for-sale units as, with affordable covenants and restrictions, if you think about the logistics involved in this company going out and marketing, marketing them, that can be another six months, 12 months. Your concerns about the timeliness of using the 5.3 million dollars to produce affordable rental units is, is noted. We share those concerns. It's really, like I said earlier, chicken and the egg to get started to do this. We have projects that are in the pipeline. We're not at liberty to talk about those, that we know we can use this money to help leverage subsidized units. We hear what you're saying loud and clear in terms of this community's need to produce affordable housing units. Commissioner, your, your research is right on. Cities are moving away from owner-occupied rental units. They're moving away from the big numbers and they're trying, and they're moving toward, toward locking up rental, rental units. 5.3 million dollars can lock up a lot of rental units when they're, when it's done right. If you have concerns about our ability to implement that, they're so noted, we would ask that you give us time to approve our ability to do that. It's a new world. El Segundo did not go down the redevelopment agency path years ago and it's paying for it dearly today, dearly. Million, tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars in local property tax dollars were lost by that decision not to have redevelopment agency. And of that, 20% of that money would have been used for affordable housing units. There are hundreds of units that should have been built here that weren't. So this is a start. This is an opportunity, a golden opportunity for us to finally get our act together, get out there and produce affordable housing units. So we're not at liberty to talk about stuff that's in the pipeline.
Would you consider putting together an affordable housing commission or committee or something that kind of had some public oversight that can?
You, you can do that. It'll slow it down and make it more cumbersome and take much longer. Staff knows what needs to be done. We know how to do this. This is routine staff work. We would ask that you give us the opportunity to do it. If we can't do it and get it done, the council will hold the city manager accountable. I won't be here. So, I mean, with this, there's 5.3 million dollars on the table. If you're not comfortable with this and you think they should be owner-occupied, just so directs Sam to tell the city council that and go, go from there. But this, this project has been in limbo for a very long time. I'd like to see, my recommendation is get the money, get it in the bank and let's get out there and start doing affordable housing. So that, that would be my plea to you and I'm sorry, I didn't know I was going to be talking about this.
My argument would be that, do you really think you can produce affordable units in less time than we could qualify buyers for the existing project?
I don't know the answer. I know I can, based on, we could, we could produce far more affordable rental units. Can it be faster than these six units here to lock it up? Probably not, but over the next two to four years, absolutely. The pressure on land and development is so strong for market rate, we could require a certain percentage, especially through density bonus law, a, a fair number of mixed units. When you say mixed, I have a lot of experience doing market rate projects with 20% or so that are affordable and you don't know it. You don't know it. They're, they're, they're all over Southern California. There are communities where you have very nice million-dollar condos and right next door is a subsidized rental unit. It, it can be done.
Yeah, which is exactly what I think that that project represents.
So let me ask a question.
If it were, if it were a rental prod piece, but it's not.
Let me ask a question I asked earlier. You talked about density bonuses. Does that require rezoning in some parts of El Segundo to increase density?
No, the state, the state law with a density bonus allows us to take our existing density and add the bonus on top of it. That's, hence the phrase density bonus.
Okay, so, so a developer can actually create more units than they are currently zoned to do?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, by right.
A question for staff or David maybe. Is there an option to go back to council and say, here are your two, we want to see the eight units back on the board? If you're ultimately going to make the decision in the interest of time, they're presented with two resolutions?
With our recommendation being whatever we're going to vote on tonight amongst us.
Because I do, if we.
In the interest of time of what she's saying.
I don't, I don't really care about the D.R. Horton people who have reserved units and they're being held up. That's not my concern, but my concern is just resolving this issue of affordable housing as quickly as possible. So rather than have to recreate a resolution that we already approved and come back and we have to meet and then that goes to council, can we take the resolution that we already approved and go back to council with that and with this and with our recommendation of one over the other, but ultimately?
So it doesn't have to go through another?
Exactly, back to us. In other words, what if we had, would we come to terms tonight? Would you, would you be willing to approve the eight affordable housing units as we did last time?
I would not.
Okay, so we would have a no vote. I would be a yes vote and you would be a, a yes vote. So then it, that would, should, when, when we make that motion, that would pass?
It's not a quorum.
Actually, you need three votes in order to have, to adopt a resolution.
So then it would fail.
Right.
And then the recommendation would then be what to the city council, whatever we're actually telling them? Or do we have to, or what? We postpone it until we have another member here, a planning commission?
That's correct, yeah.
Madam Chairmembers of the commission, perhaps you can convey your desire to have the choices in front of the city council. I think that's what you were saying, right? And so the council would have the options.
With the understanding that it was a two to one.
Well, they would probably have the options anyway, right?
Right.
I mean, even if we.
Yeah, no matter what we say.
And I hope I'm out of turn here, but I, one possibility might be you rec, you, you are willing to support the In-Lu, but you are throwing out the option to do the six or eight units and you would like to see city council consider that as well. Does that make sense?
I would actually word it the other way around.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, well, but you're not going to get to three, I don't think.
We're not, not tonight, we're not.
Yeah.
Not tonight, we're not. So.
But, but there's option A and B, right? Option B is the In-Lu fee. I mean, don't option A, no matter what happens here tonight, don't option A and B still go in front of city council?
Yeah.
Yes, they would just go with recommendation.
Let me, let me, let me see if I can clarify this. The commission, we are looking to the commission to make a recommendation.
We have a quorum tonight because there's three of us.
You have a quorum. Typically, resolutions require three votes and three affirmative votes to adopt.
Okay.
We are looking for you, we've always looked for you to adopt a resolution, to memorialize your decision so that we can take that resolution to the city council. I'm not seeing a reason why we need to really deviate from that at this course now. So it's really amongst you to come into a consensus. If you can't come to a consensus among the three of you, then we just need to wait for another member to come so that there can be a consensus and that's really as simple as that. That's the, that's the, the beauty and the frustration part of this process is that we look to all of you to make this decision. I would not recommend presenting both options. The council is looking to you to weigh these options and to wrestle with this issue amongst yourselves. With regard to the other market rate units, that's a matter that can be handled administratively that doesn't require planning commission or city council. So as far as D.R. Horton's concerns about the market rate units, that's a conversation that we can have separately with them and we can try and work with them and resolve that. So we can just focus on the affordable units. So if we can't build a consensus tonight, what I would suggest is that we, give us direction on what you want to see at the next meeting and we can prepare a resolution for the eight moderate units if there will be three votes in favor of that. And that's my recommendation.
So what if there are not three votes in favor of that and not three votes in favor of this resolution? Then we have to do this whole thing again.
Same, same, yeah.
But we have two absent this evening and.
It sounds like Mr. Baldino will never be part of this conversation.
I would love Carol's.
Carol's input and she's on vacation, so she should be back. I don't know how long she's going to be gone.
How about this? If, if, if all of you can't agree on one option or the other, if there is a way that you could frame your recommendation, that all of you agree on what the language would be, we can put that into a resolution, meaning, you know, we would like to see option A, but if that doesn't work, then, you know, option B.
Well, I don't think we can come to terms because I don't think that Mr. Hessler is actually going to, I think he would prefer the other, take the money and develop it in, in other ways.
Right.
And I think that I'm, I'm very much remaining as the last reading that was presented to the city council. I would like that to remain and I think you're the same. So I think what all we have tonight to do is to wait for one more, since it's not Mr. Baldino, it'll be Mrs. Wingate and she'll have to come back when, and I don't know how long she's going to be gone.
She'll be back for the February 13th meeting.
For the next meeting, okay.
No, that's two from now.
Two meetings away.
Okay.
Right.
Well, with apologies, that's what we're going to have to do.
Sorry.
Right? Yeah, I, I think then we will continue this item, okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Perfect. Thank you so much and thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. How about any continued business?
We should have a motion and a vote.
A motion to?
Continue.
To continue. May I hear a motion to continue? Item number H2.
To February 13th.
To the February 13th meeting.
Sure.
Sure. I will make a motion.
And a second? I'm five, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's unanimous to continue this item. Thank you so much. Also, continued business, also item number J, we've got the election of officers for 2020. May we continue that as well?
Yeah, you can do that on direction. Let me, just tell me so and I'll put it on the next agenda.
Exactly, then let's just do that. It's unanimous, it will.
Or we can put it on an agenda where we'll have five, if that's what you're interested in.
I think so.
I'll just keep adding it to the agenda until it works.
There you go, that would be really great. Because we should all be here for that.
And I'm not here for the next meeting. I will be here for the February, wait, February 14th.
13th.
I will be there for that.
Okay, but you're not here next meeting.
No, I'm sorry, yeah.
So it may actually be the one after the 13th, after the February.
I'll be here for the 13th.
I will be here for 13th, but Carol will definitely not be here next meeting.
No, so then that's right. But Ryan wouldn't be here for the 13th either.
Correct.
So it would be the meeting following?
That's fine, I mean, the offers, we can punt down the road.
Just for, just.
All right, let's just make it happen.
I'll just add it to the agendas until it works.
Okay, great, thanks Greg. And report from planning and building safety director?
I, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, Mr. Lee, thank you so much. Any comments from the dais?
I do, but I'll wait if you guys want to go.
I think I've said enough.
I have a different topic.
Oh, good.
Hey, I just wanted to say, the, the December meeting, that Dr. Brown was the send-off meeting, the, the DLR people showed up in force to talk about the new green belt on aviation and I don't know if you guys are familiar with this. So when you drive down aviation right now, there is a massive pile of dirt. It is, it's, it's in the railroad easement. And the DLR people got together and said, we're tired of looking at this, it's El Segundo property or may, or maybe it's, it's, it's in the El Segundo right of way. They came together and they've been working on this for a year or more and they want to turn that into a significant greenway, green belt, which will have bike paths, it'll be, basically it's an El Segundo border. And so it's ugly right now. The city council instructed staff to do a letter of intent to apply for a grant for that. I think it's a $10 million grant. They went ahead and did that and I just want to say, I think Mr. Mitnick mayor may not be listening to me right now, but staff instructed him to put together a, a letter of intent and I think that went through, or at least it went to Metro. So I'm very excited about that project. It will be a complement to the gateway that we have on, on Main Street. And whether or not those things jive aesthetically, they're both very important projects and it is an entrance to El Segundo, so I'm glad that's moving forward.
Yeah, very good. Very good.
Thank you for telling us about it.
Yeah, it's very exciting news.